All right. Welcome, gentlemen. This is a special meeting called by the Marquette Township Board. Today is Thursday, June 18th. It's 4:31 PM. If you do roll call, Randy, please.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasure Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Critari is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff present is Manager Gerard, our Planner, Zoning Administrator Jason McCarthy, and our Staff Planner, Ryan Dietrichson. And Superintendent Public Works slash new manager, John Kangas is here also.
Good deal. Thank you. We don't really have any public unless Ryan or Jason, you want to say something? You're still public too. You bypass that and just get into it.
Answer any questions that come.
Okay. I don't believe there are any conflicts of interest that I'm aware of. And the discussion today is to consider the 2021 Traffic Alternatives Program, the TAP Grant Application Resolution that the Board did agree to on Tuesday night's meeting for a non-motorized pathway on US 41. There's our agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Bart, Bart, that, or Ernie supported that.
Okay, thank you.
Say Lynn.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody, we haven't seen a copy of that. Are we going to see a copy of that, or should we see it to be able to support it and go forward?
Yes, I'll have that up in a second, Dave, after we approve the agenda.
Okay. You just need to do your roll call on the agenda.
Yes. So the motion was to approve the agenda. Trustee Marks.
Yes.
Trustee, or Treasure Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee LaRue.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
Clerk Critari is yes, and Supervisor Durant.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Okay, I'll get up that. Okay, there's the resolution. Can everyone see that on their screen?
No.
I have the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Agenda.
Okay, hold on, I'll switch that out then. Okay, you should be able to see that now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the resolution, and Jason can cover that. He went well over it with Roger Zappa today.
Hey, good afternoon. So, this is a fairly simple resolution in that it's not like what we did with the TAP Grant. Once we got awarded for the tunnel, there was a more kind of a comprehensive resolution. This one speaks to just applying for the grant in conjunction with, in co-sponsorship with MDOT. And it stipulates that, you know, the estimated project cost is $200,000 in the fourth, whereas it jumps down to Marquette Township is not eligible to apply for TAP grants, but the MDOT has offered to apply for TAP funding on behalf of the township, because they're federal funds, remember? Number one, Marquette Township will enter into an agreement with MDOT to own, operate, and maintain the pedestrian pathway and all pertinences constructed as part of the TAP project. So similar to our other pathways, which we are required to maintain. Number two, Marquette Township will enter into an agreement to pay a TAP grant matching funds for an amount equal to 20% of the cost currently estimated at $40,000. That's a very conservative estimate. And I'll tell you more in a minute. And then number three was an addition by Roger stating that any resolution inconsistent with this resolution is hereby rescinded. So that's kind of a safety net for both parties. But one thing I wanted to relay to the group, and I don't know if there's any public here, but in a conversation with Rob Turbo, who's the boss up at MDOT in Isringen last night, he indicated that the 2019 project is actually at or a little bit below budget. And he does anticipate, not a lot, but a small amount of money coming back to the township. And he didn't give any indication as to how much that would be. But an amount of money coming back to the township, which could be applied, you know, against the $40,000 that the Board is considering to contribute to the project. Basically, this just solidifies what was discussed on Tuesday. And it's, it was reviewed by MDOT. In fact, the initial template for this resolution was sent by MDOT because we wanted to make sure we covered what they needed to move forward with the TAP grant application. So this is just to get us to the application phase. If we, if the Board chooses to adopt this resolution today, then we will go ahead and work with MDOT to apply for the application and, or fill out the application and submit it. And then we should know whether or not we're funded in August of 2020. And at that point, there would be another resolution, once the project agreement is put into place. And that's very similar to all of our recreation grants with the DNR. Basically, the same thing. You pass a resolution saying you're going to apply for a grant, and you pass another one once you're awarded, and you have a project agreement in place. I'll share my screen really quick and just remind everyone, remind everyone where the project is located.
You put yourself on mute too, Jason.
Yeah, I was hitting the space bar there. So everybody see the map here? So this is Napa. This is where the tunnel was installed, and currently there's pathway going all across from the tunnel, all the way across to Wright Street. And right now it terminates at the former Senex location, right here. So this segment of pathway would be from, this is labeled as 492, but it's Wright Street. And it would run along separated from the roadway in front of what, this is the old Range Bank building, which will now be the Horizon Dump and Goonage location. And along all the fronts of these businesses, our main, kind of, one of our main business districts, at least the oldest main business district was Commerce Drive, Wright Street segment. So it'll run all the way across to here, to the intersection at Commerce Drive in US 41. It's a 1,500 linear foot segment. And if you look at, you know, our non-motorized transportation network. You can see that segment that we just discussed, the green is completed pathway. This would be the Safe House and School Project from 2015, constructed in 16, that terminated here at Warner. And then, of course, Warner grows all the way across, you know, for the view. But there's a signalized intersection here for pedestrians at Commerce Drive. And then, of course, we have pathway really running all the way to Lost Creek along 492 there. So we're starting to see some connectivity with some of these segments that get put in. So we have a couple segments to work on in the future, where it might be feasible. And that would be the segment from, we did get Discount Tire to put in pathway to their north of their property line. So that'll be right about here. So there's this segment here, and then just the segment for Commerce. And that's a general recap of what's being proposed. You know, I'm hopeful that the Board didn't change their mind in the last couple of days, but we put the resolution together per your request and are prepared to move forward if the Board's prepared to move forward.
Okay, so Treasure Johnson last week, or Tuesday, asked about funding and whether we should take another loan. They looked, and we do have over $241,000 in that account. So the 40 would bring us down to roughly 201. We already owe $203,000, I think, is the balance when I looked at May's numbers. I don't know if that's an option, or we want to save that, put that in the back of our mind, take it out of the general fund. I don't know, Randy, if you've got anything different on our general fund situation?
Can't come out of the general fund. I think what you're referring to is the general fund is paying back a prior loan to the solid waste fund.
Right. No, I mean, I didn't know if we had, you know, you said Tuesday that we really don't have the flexibility of taking too much more out of the general fund to cover the 40. And I didn't know if there was anything different.
Oh, no, that's, no. We're still trying to calculate what that ultimately means. That's the reason I've not filled that vacant building and grounds position is because that's about $30,000 there. So I'm not sure how much further we're going to have to go. It depends on what happens with the tribunal on Meyer and on Odeberro. Given the Supreme Court case, I'm not very optimistic. I think we're going to be somewhere in the middle, which will be a refund of three years to Odeberro and one year to Meyer.
Well, in Meyer, or Odeberro is going, well, they went from 2.2, I think, down to a million that they wanted for their value, so.
Will be somewhere in the middle of that.
Thirty or forty thousand, or thirty, forty percent.
But that's still a substantial downgrade from where they actually are right now for taxes. So huge.
And multiply that times three for three years back.
Yep. So, anyway, general fund, I don't think you can rely on general fund for it. We're going to have a tough time from the next six months getting through what we already have budgeted.
Okay.
Randy, on Odeberro Properties, how many properties are they?
It's two, I believe. Two separate buildings. Peak Fitness, and I think the Fish and Wildlife was another one, but I can't remember. I can't remember if it was Fish and Wildlife Building. They're renting that from Pete.
Thoughts, gentlemen? What's your pleasure? Or any questions for Jason? Ernie?
I don't have a question for Jason, but if we move forward with taking dollars out of the solid waste, I think that would be about the maximum we can take out of there. Because I'm looking for the future in that. We don't know what the closer dollars will be, or what's going to happen out there at this point in time. We have to maintain a good balance there, somewhere around $200,000 in that account, because we have no idea what the future is going to bring in that.
Are we going to set some kind of a payment plan back to that?
To be able to add what we have, don't we? Can't we, Randy? Add it to that 203,000 we already owe?
It can be tough adding to it because I'm not going to be able to pay it. That's, that's the issue. That comes right off the top of my general fund. So for 2021, you would now add another $40,000 or partial payment on top of everything else that we have to pay in 2021 to keep the budget the way it is.
What are we paying on the solid waste loan now?
It varies from, from budget year to budget year. That was a 30-year payback. So it would be paid back fully within 30 years. So we're paying what we can, depending on what we have left after we budget. There's not been very much the last few years. We fund basic services first, and the things that we want to provide to the residents, and then what's left either goes into the fund balance, or it gets allocated back to pay that debt down. So we've been doing both.
So we don't have a committed amount that we're doing each month, or?
It's not a fixed amount. Depends on what, what we do with regard to the budget. And we already know that next year's budget, revenue sharing is going to be down by about $45,000. Revenue sharing. That doesn't take into consideration anything in regard to taxes.
Well, I don't know.
What can happen? But what can happen is that if we move forward with that, it's up to the Board to determine how they want to pay it back. And the manager can come to the Board and say, we don't have it this year. But we're still going to have to, still going to be computing interest on that dollar amount against the, the general fund and that. So it's up to the Board to make a decision as to how they want to handle it and that.
Yeah, you can make, you can take a finite position. If you remember in Public Works, when you did the, the loan from the water fund, or from the wastewater fund to the water fund, basically, that had a specified payment and percentage rate, rate in the agreement, the loan agreement. So that's budgeted every year. So you could do the same thing with this. All I'm reminding you is, is that you may have to get it from somewhere else. Something else like recreation, you know, amenities at Lyons Field, things such as that, we may not be able to continue to fund for a period. We have to fund the core services.
Okay, Randy, we were talking about the Little League. So if we started our upkeep of Lyons Field, we've got an obligation to those two teams, if we can open this year, to, to keep those fields up. So is that the same Lyons Field budget you're talking about that we might have to cut, or are you talking about improvements to Lyons Field?
Both.
Okay.
Because with, with dealing with the ball teams, that's all after hours. It's all overtime hours.
Randy, can't we set up some, that the teams themselves set the chalk the lines and that? We used to do that years ago at Hurley Field.
We are still, we are still responsible if somebody gets injured because we're allowing them to do it on our property.
But you don't have to be there.
No, but if somebody cuts off their foot, we're responsible for that.
Yeah, I know that. But I mean, they don't, we don't have to have somebody there at the field.
Well, you'll be talking, you'll be talking about this at your meeting on the seventh, because it will be, it'll be an agenda item. What do you want to do with the ball field? They want to go all the way through September now.
All right.
That means it's going to have to maintain the field, buy supplies, open up, lock up. It's still ours.
All right. What you discussed at that meeting?
Yep.
Andy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a point of order. We're kind of varying from our subject here, so.
A little bit, but I just brought it up because he had mentioned about, you know.
I know it's budget related, but.
Yeah. Well, and quite frankly, that's the reason I brought it up at the last meeting was, you know, that's an alternative funding source, because I'm, I don't believe I'm going to have it in the general fund. Jason, you mentioned there might be some money coming back from the current project. But what portion of the project, do you know if that's coming back from?
Well, it'd be coming back from the TAP.
Was that the tunnel project?
Yeah. I also like to add that we're currently, in fact, at your next meeting, we're looking to award the landscape, native landscaping requirement scope order at the next meeting. Which, once that's completed, there's going to be, you know, I mean, we can ask for an extension, but once that's completed, we need to submit our final reimbursement request from the DNR. So there'd be, you know, final payments for grant projects that we completed that would be coming back too. But I'm sure Randy's already got that accounted for somewhere.
Well, that just neutralizes the expense, because the expense is now booked. So it just covers what's already booked as an expense.
What kind of interest rate do you happen to remember, Randy, that we have on that account already, that 200,000?
From the, from the general fund?
Yeah.
What the general fund is paying back is at the interest rate that it would have accrued where it's still invested. So what is it, Ernie, 0.3% now?
If we're lucky.
Yeah, but I think we set like a 2%.
No, we set, we did set a rate, 1%, I believe it was. Remember, Dave, with the water, the transfer to the water fund? I think that was 1% or 2%.
It was 1%.
1%. Okay, that's a fixed rate on that one. But we don't have a fixed rate on, on the, the loan for the purchase of the property for the well project. That was whatever the, whatever the interest rate would have accrued at the time that it's paid back.
Well, we could do, we could actually budget something like $1,000 a month for the next 35 years. Forty, you know, depending on, I was going to pull up an amortization schedule real quick.
Well, you can budget anything you want, but you have to have the money to cover it. That's why I'm saying your revenue is not going to be there to cover that in the general fund.
But you were talking about taking it out in the first place and paying it back, so.
Oh, no, I'm talking, oh, you're talking the solid waste fund now.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you could, but if you're going to budget that out of the general fund, what I'm saying is, is you may not have $1,000 a month to pay it back. The general fund revenue is going away. That's what I'm trying to portray to you. Revenue sharing is going down. Tax values are going down because of the state taking properties off the tax rolls. I mean, so our revenue is not stagnant, not even stagnant. Revenue is going negative. Costs are still going up. So, I mean, we're, we're going to have to dip into, I'm afraid in 21, we're going to have to dip into the fund balance simply to balance what we currently have. And that does not take into consideration the tax tribunal cases that are pending.
Actually, it'd only be $1,000 a year, not a month, so it wouldn't be quite as bad. Dave?
Yeah, I guess what we're talking about here is, we actually, we don't know how much we're talking about. It's going to be someplace in the neighborhood of $40,000 or less, and we don't know how much money we're getting back from our other TAP grant for the tunnel, which could drive that down a little bit. And when exactly does this money have to be available if we get this grant?
I would suspect not till the grants, you're muted, Jay.
All right. If you remember when the tunnel TAP grant project was put into a motion, we started receiving billing in the fall, I want to say, because that's when some of the design and engineering, engineering work that MDOT did. So it would, it would likely start late fall to, you know, right around New Year of coming up this year.
The expense part. I think what we're talking about is, is using this, the solid waste money as a last resort. We're still, we're not even sure how much we're talking about there yet, right?
Correct.
And we're certainly not going to discuss, we don't have any figures to discuss the amount we're talking about, or any kind of repayment program, because we don't know what we're going to do yet.
No, I guess, you know, the, the point that we're at, Dave, you know, following the last meeting, is whether or not the Board wants to go forward with this project. And if the Board wants to go forward with the project, then we would take the 40,000 or 36,000, whatever it turns out to be, from the solid waste fund to be able to make the application and the commitment. And if we found then other sources, we would not take it from the solid waste fund.
All right. That's, that's what I was getting around to, is it's kind of a last resort. If we can't find it anyplace else, then we can take it out of there, as opposed to not being able to make good on the, on the TAP grant.
Or take it out of there and pay it back as quickly as we could, because right now, we're still trying to figure out what the governor's doing for the rest of this year, and what impact that's going to have on revenues. We just don't know. I mean, she, she's changing. She's got another press conference, I guess, scheduled for tomorrow. But, you know, we don't know whether we can bring people back to work. We don't know where we're at yet. In particularly, we don't know what the sales tax revenue is and how that's really going to impact revenue sharing.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess what I was getting down to is we're just, we have, we're still looking for some sources, and I would think that we're going to go out and see if we can find some other sources with the Rec Committee and the planning, to see if there's some, some private sources out there. But worst-case scenario, if that isn't available, then the solid waste is a, that's a last resort, and we know that money is there. So if, worst-case scenario, we know that money is there.
That's correct. You know, I agree with Jason.
If you have to tag it onto a loan, you could always tag it onto the end of the $200,000.
Good, that's true. You know, and I, I agree with Jason. I think, you know, finishing off this connectivity is important from, not only from the standpoint of cooperation and relationship with, with MDOT, but it's what we've told the residents we were going to do. And, you know, that's primary. It's like the road project, you know, no matter what we do, and I'm real concerned about that next year, no matter what we do, we have to meet that obligation to maintain the roads at the full, at the full amount, you know, and that's, if our tax revenue is down, that's where that money comes from. It comes right from tax revenues. So, you know, we have to do those kinds of things. What we don't have to do, is we don't have to do the recreation things that we planned, you know, the other things like the community, community improvement stuff. I'm looking at what we can cut out of the budget, you know. We've already got, you know, a couple of commitments that luckily the DDA is covering. They're going to cover the plantings on the two roundabouts. Now, that's already part of theirs. They budgeted that. But a lot of the things at the bottom part of the budget that we have that are the community enhancement type stuff, we're just not going to be able to do them this year. We're going to have to cancel them. And I've already canceled some of those. Not doing the Community Day and not doing some of those types of projects helped a bunch, because there's usually about a $5,000 or $6,000 expenditure there for bands and everything else. So those are the kinds of things I'm looking at getting rid of out of this year's budget to try and soften that end of the year, the last quarter below. We'll be looking at that, you know, in the last quarter of the year in terms of what kinds of final deletions do we have to do from the budget. I have not filled the vacant building and grounds position, and I'm not going to fill that this year.
So I guess in an effort to move this along a little bit, I would make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
And John, you had your hand up.
That's all right. Roll call vote.
Yep, has to be. All right, any other questions? Or Ryan, did you want to add anything? Appreciate you being done.
Nothing at this time.
Okay.
You've got 5,000 to travel and train we can give up, because we're not going anywhere this year, I can tell you that.
Yeah, well, those are the kinds of things that I've got on my list, you know, and I have not sat down with the department head yet. I wanted to get through, get through this month before we start having those kinds of discussions.
Yeah, if we can get to a stopping point with the governor, then we've got a benchmark to go from.
Right.
Till she really tells us what's happening.
Even if we just have an idea of when people could get back to opening up their businesses, because I'm real concerned people aren't going to be able to pay their taxes this year. You know, that doesn't hurt us, because the county absorbs that, but still they may not stay in business, and that will hurt us.
The only problem with that, we have a lot of people that pay upfront, and that, and we just have to wait until April or so before we get the dollars from the county and that. So we would not have that, that funds coming in from, say, December 1st on, and that.
Yep.
Well, and what we're committing to here is that we are going to go through with the project, and we've had the discussion about trying to figure out where the money's coming from. So that's, that's what we're guaranteeing right now, is that we will commit to this 40 maximum $1,000 expense. And that's the motion in the second.
Okay, so, so the roll call vote on the resolution on your screen is, trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Treasure Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Critari is, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. So I'll get that done today and get it off to Jason.
Thank you, folks. I was on the phone with Isaac Peterson, who's applying for another job, and I got a call on a reference form, so I gave him a good reference, and then I followed it up by talking to him on the phone for about half, half hour at lunchtime today. He was indicating that as part of, he's part of MNDOT, so MDOT in Minnesota currently, and he was told that they may not be going back to work until next year, as far as physically back to work. So, and if we're doing this in a regional way, which has been what, you know, the governor's kind of trumped, trumpeted around, is, you know, it, it seems like we're just getting extended longer and longer, which is fine. I think we've been very productive, and I, I think, I think there's some arguments about maybe more productive, but, yeah, it's pretty interesting and definitely uncharted territory.
Yeah, Michigan's doing the same thing. Some, some are being told you're not going to be back this year at all, state, at the state level. So I don't know, it's pretty fluid.
Yeah. Dave?
Yeah, and a somewhat unrelated subject, only because we brought it up earlier. Who determines if we're going to open up the field over at Lyons Field to be used for baseball?
You do. That's, it's going to be on the agenda on the seventh.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have some rough costs for you in terms of what it would take to open it and man it, you know, and, and Pete brought up one of the options that you have, and that is to enter an agreement with them that they're responsible for the maintenance of the field, the prepping of the field. We'll let the prepping of the field. We'll let them use our equipment as long as they sign a waiver, basically holding us not responsible for anything that occurs to them or any of their spectators. So I mean, that's an option.
I'm not, I'm not thinking so much about, about the cost at this particular time as I am talking about safety.
That's it. You know, if they're talking about going into September and starting at six o'clock in the evening, it's pretty dark around eight o'clock in September.
Randy, do they have insurance policy for that?
Us?
They do.
We can require that.
Put us on.
Yeah, as a, yeah. We are, we are covered if we sponsor it or have an agreement to allow them, then they're a rider on our coverage. I much prefer them having their own coverage with us as an additional named insurer, just like we do with NTN for their events and, and other groups.
I've talked about it on the seventh again, but it just seems that the bigger concern is, is are we putting the township out there to be liable for anybody that gets COVID-19 because they're at the ball field?
And that is definitely a concern. And, you know, one of the things that, yeah, that would have to happen is they would have to supply us a plan, a plan that, that complies with all the requirements of COVID, COVID that they would be responsible for. And hold us harmless.
Be interesting to see all that information before we.
Yep. Nagani Township has, Nagani Township has done that. And City of Nagani has done that. And I have a copy of what Little League has submitted to them as their plan. I don't, you know, they've, they've accepted it. I don't know that I would accept it the way it's currently written.
How does, how does the plans line up with the state guidelines?
Well, it, it, it basically duplicates the state guidelines, but it doesn't go into any kind of detail about how they're going to do it. It just says they will, you know, just like, just like the, just like the executive, it's basically the wording out of the executive order. But it doesn't give us any detail about what they're going to use, how they're going to use it, where they're going to get it, who's going to pay for it, all of that.
Yeah, I want to belabor the issue here. We'll talk about it again on the seventh, but that'll be an interesting conversation.
Well, there are, there's probably a big revenue generator for them. I know, you know, Marquette's a little bit different, but between Nagani and this ring and the surrounding area there, I think they have over 200 softball teams.
Oh, yeah.
Between guys and girls and mixed teams and everything else, gear league, all that stuff.
We're only talking Little League here, the Little League season. They, they want to try and, they still want to try and have a full season and starting in mid-July and going through September.
Well, if you can pull those contracts too that we have and show the board what we're required to do now based on that, and then make some recommendations as to what we could alter to allow them. Maybe it doesn't go through September. Maybe it's only at the end of August.
I think, I think for them to be able to get enough games in to actually have a season, they've calculated it needs to go into September.
Yeah.
Because I think it's three or four days a week for games.
Wow. That's a lot.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. The other question is, when can we open bathrooms? That's the other question that goes along with this. If we can't open the restroom facilities, it's going to be kind of difficult for them to be running games.
Yeah. And then the porta potties, who pays for that?
Well, we have one. We have placed, yeah, we have this, this last Monday, we placed the porta potty at the kiddie park just because we have mothers and kids there. So we did put a porta potty there. We did not open the pavilion. But we are not maintaining the porta potty. North Country is.
So TD6 is reporting that Governor Whitner has extended the state of emergency until July 16th.
16th? Yeah, just getting past the Fourth of July. Yeah.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to do anything until after the 16th anyway.
Yeah.
But we'll make some decisions on the seventh. As soon as we get these, these numbers pulled together, we'll send them out to you by email. So you'll at least have it before the meeting to take a look at.
We'll have another meeting tomorrow morning, I guess.
The governor?
Has anybody seen the, the colored maps that are going around with the amount of cases that are being regenerated? Michigan's doing very well in that category.
Yeah.
And they're saying, you know, attributing it to, of course, the way that we've handled it.
Yeah, well, the states, the states that are really seeing huge influxes, number one, we're not testing. And number two, opened up all of their beaches and restaurants a month earlier before we did. Yeah. So they had crowds. And I'm, I'm sure, let's see, what is it now? About another, what, three or four days before we see the impact of the protests?
Oh, time wise, sure.
Time wise, you know, before symptoms would show.
Well, we know that, what was that election in, was that Minnesota or Ohio? They had a whole bunch of cases after the open election that they shouldn't have.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to see California after the 50,000 people congregated on Hollywood Boulevard to protest. 50,000 people in one place.
I appreciate the board's support on this project. I promise you that I will work with my fellow staff and the Rep Committee, Road Committee, whoever we can come up with and try to whittle that number down to as minimal impact as possible. Not that we wouldn't do that anyway, but especially with regard to the current situation. So we'll see if we can get some buy-in from some folks. And again, I'm hopeful that we can get MDOT to relinquish some of those tap funds from 2018 that may be left over. That was a nice olive branch for him to extend yesterday. And we have a great working relationship with MDOT.
Well, one other thing, Jason, we might, we might want to talk about is, is we have, we have a DDA meeting coming up here at the early part of July. You might want to sit down and talk to them about doing the same thing we did for the study, doing a one-year, one-mil. That generated about 54,000. So that might be an alternative to taking from the solid waste fund or even the general fund.
Good idea.
Nice conversation with the supervisor earlier about something along those lines and formulating a plan for the DDA that could be supported, maybe more long-term.
Yeah, very, very possible. Can you, Jay, can you stay on for a second after we close out? Or give me a call, one or the other?
What else? Anything?
Jason, I just sent you the completed resolution emailed.
You scanned it in?
No, I, I got it done.
Okay. Thank you.
You can sign it.
I electronically signed it. It's there.
Oh. Okay.
I'm quick.
Then we just, we don't really have any more public unless either of you guys wants to add something. Any board member comment? Everybody's good? And Randy, you want to throw?
Thank you, trustee Iverson and Treasurer Johnson.
Motions today were to approve the agenda as presented and that was approved seven zero. And the second motion was to approve the 2021 Traffic Alternatives Program Tap Grant Application Resolution for the US 41 non-motorized pathway. And that was a seven zero vote in favor of.
Okay, so we can adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Support?
Okay. Roll call?
Clerk Rattarius, yes. Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned at 5:10 PM.
Sounds good. Thanks for the extra meeting, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.